Order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozzio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham. You have a quorum.
All right.
Leave the first order of business that we need is a motion to seat a temporary chair.
So move. Motion to seat Alderman Mozzio as chair or mayor pro tempore.
Seconding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All this means is I'm going to be doing a lot of reading tonight, so that's really what it means. All right, I gotta get to the top of this if I can. Okay. Is Pastor George Bonilla here? Please come up and give us the invocation, sir.
Heavenly Father, we are so thankful to you, privileged to know your son, Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray tonight. Lord, my prayer is a member of the body of Christ, of the church of Christ, a wonderful presence of God on this earth, that you bless this council, that you bless this leadership, that you bless this city, your guidance, Lord, your presence in every member of the leadership in this wonderful city of Waukegan. Lord, we are so thankful that we have the liberty to turn to you, to open ourselves to you, and to call your presence on all this leadership that you have put in this city, wonderful city, in your precious and wonderful name, we pray, Lord. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Plaidleages, please.
Plaidleages to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We should say that again. All right. Quick mayor's comments here. I have a couple of condolences here. Jerry Jedi Immersion, longtime Waukegan resident, passed away at the age of 91. Claudia Hugaison, another longtime Waukegan resident, she, her husband was Judge Hugaison, for anybody who doesn't know that. And then Biddy Johnston, who was the director of public, worked for many years, lifelong Waukegan resident, he also passed. So our prayers and thoughts are with those families, of those individuals, as we move forward. Upcoming events, Three Brothers Theater Initiative, new scripts, highlights, new playwrights in a reading series. The first reading is Falling Off the Horse, Friday and Saturday, January 24th and 25th, at 7:30 PM. The full production at Three Brothers Theater is Boeing Boeing, starting Friday, January 31st, and runs Friday and Saturdays through Saturday, February 29th. The GNC host ventriloquist Terry Fader on the 24th, Loverboy on the 25th, Black Cherry on the 31st, and comedic commentator Louis Black on February 1st. Spaghetti taco fundraiser for the award-winning Waukegan JROTC Drill Team is Saturday, the 25th, January, 11:00 AM to 5:00. Performances by the drill team, they're ranked top 10 in the national, are at 1, 3, and 4. Jazz Wave is Sunday, January 26th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at Nightshade and Dark Panemonium Brewing. The concert featuring serious musicians and casual atmosphere is free and open to the public. And finally, the African-American Student Success Summit, hosted by Waukegan High School and Warren Township High School Black Student Unions, will be Saturday, February 1st, 1 to 4, at the Waukegan Public Library. The event helps to ensure students are ready and equipped with everything they need for college or a career after high school. Waukegan High, excuse me, High School, juniors, seniors, recent grads, and parents are all invited. All right, we have a couple of Waukegan Proud Awards. We want to honor two individuals who helped decorate the downtown for the holidays, Austin Cantu and Chris Seagrim. If they're here, please come up. Austin or Chris, are they here? Hi, Austin. Clerk Kiel Kelly, don't you usually read these?
I do.
Okay, there you go.
City of Waukegan, City of Progress, Illinois, does hereby present Austin Cantu this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your expertise in helping to decorate downtown Waukegan in celebration of the holiday season, presented on January 21st, 2020. And let me get the other one. Where's Ms. Seagrim? She's not here? Waukegan, City of Progress, Illinois, does hereby present to Chris Seagrim this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition of your expertise in helping to decorate downtown Waukegan in celebration of the holiday season, presented on January 21st, 2020. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dammit. I cut myself.
Thank you. Thank you for that volunteerism. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for running over.
All right, moving right along. Audience time. Clerk, do you have the list or not yet?
It's on its way.
Okay.
You have three minutes. Hopefully, my timer is in good shape, or at least the timer person. The first one is Rochelle Mendez. Rochelle Mendez, you have three minutes.
Thank you and good evening. I stand before you tonight with a matter that weighs heavily on my heart and mind. My name is Rochelle Mendez. I am a trustee of the Waukegan Public Library, a position that I value and do not take lightly. It has been my honor to represent the voices of this community and to always keep this community's interest at the forefront of every motion brought before me. With this in mind, I stand before you tonight to make you aware of the present matter facing our library, a matter that should not be ignored and one that greatly impacts the people of Waukegan. As some are aware, last Wednesday, in open session, our board voted to not renew a contract with the library's executive director. This wasn't decided simply because she was not a good fit, to quote one of the high board members. It was a decision that was the culmination of nearly 10 months of careful deliberation. It was not done impulsively, nor was it done without expansive consideration. As a trustee, what was presented before me over the last several months demanded action. As a citizen, what was presented before me, I found unnerving. As of today, our vote seems to mean nothing. There are several board trustees who appear to be usurping the vote in ways I feel are unjust and unethical. The board concluded not to renew contract with the executive director, and it was understood that we would immediately begin to seek her replacement. However, a game of semantics is carefully being played by a key member of our board. What is going on should be of great concern to every council member and Waukegan resident present today. Our library is in crisis, ladies and gentlemen. To quote a letter written to me by one of the board members on the eve of the vote, "If serious issues are not resolved soon, there may be up to 20 more library staffers ready to walk out the front door," end quote. And you have the letter in its entirety right there.
It's right here. I'm going to pass it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your timer not working, dear clerk?
I got the egg timer, sir.
Okay, I can put this up here so they can see.
If I can get this going. Mary Stickles, please.
Hi.
Mary?
Stick right into the ma'am line. You think I need this down here? I'm only two feet tall.
What are you trying to say?
I can't stand on my toes. All right. I am here as also, as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Waukegan Public Library, and my concerns are being, are kind of echoing what you heard previous from the previous, excuse me, speaker. A number of employees have left the library, and in fact, the history of the library, there has never been such a significant number of employees leave WPL. The common thread is the director and the unwillingness to adapt to the needs of our community and the programs and services WPL has long provided. Waukegan Public Library has become known as a learning center, providing literacy programs for families, healthcare literacy, computer literacy, tutoring language skills, and homework assistance, just to name a few. The loss of qualified personnel has impacted the programs and services to the community and the dependence on them. One prime example is the decision to close a reference desk for lack of personnel. They had all left WPL, and what library does not have a reference desk or a librarian available for reference every day? It was several weeks before it reopened, and during that lapse, staff was asked to cover this loss while also maintaining their assigned position. So loss of personnel affected everybody, patrons and employees alike. To date, the WPL has lost more than a quarter of its employees, replacing them has been decidedly slow, as the exodus began in April of 2018, and several positions are still not filled. It was said by someone in the administration that the library could have left, could have all the employees leave, we just hire replacements. I'd say that might be one of the reasons that WPL employees feel they're not being recognized or appreciated for their loyalty to the library. The loss of the employees is directly tied to the director and failing to recognize problems within the library, which has created an unpleasant working environment, as qualified people continue to leave the library. The admin staff needs to understand that these employees are dedicated to the library and the library and Waukegan's community. They open the doors every day, they answer the phones, they greet every patron, check the shelves, instruct patrons on services, turn the lights on, and close it down at night. They are the core that runs WPL, and to hear "we just hire replacements" does not do justice to WPL employees. We're a nationally recognized library because of our learning, early learning center, and the literacy programs that develop to the central needs of the community. The only way we can right this ship is to find a director who is a better fit for the library and the community at large. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Alderman Mozzio, I'm really glad you're seated in that position tonight, because if you all can recall, I wrote an article dealing with city business, and in many cases, sometime, you know, you guys have a tendency to say, "That's not city business," such is the case. We had a speaker last week who was speaking as to where he was expounding upon some of the things that he had, that he had went through and experienced when he was in the county jail. And Alderman, you went on to say, "Well, you know, there's really nothing we can do because that is the county jail, we're the city." And, you know, I really would beg to differ on that, and, you know, this is not an attack, but that, in my opinion, that's the fetus or mentality, which I don't think as a city Alderman you can afford to have. You're seated as the county seat in one of the richest counties in the state of Illinois. And I'm saying that whether it's at the county, whether it's at the state's attorney's office, if one of your constituents come to you and says to you, "My son, my daughter, my husband is being beat or abused over at the county jail," I would like to think if I was an Alderman and one of my constituents come and say to me something like that is going on and sitting in a position of power that you guys sit in, I wouldn't tell her, "Ma'am, you got to go talk to the county." I wouldn't say, "There's nothing we could do." I would say, "Ma'am, if I'm seated on my couch, let me get up and go see what I could do. Let me call over here and talk to Mr. John Idleberg and see what's going on with your son or your daughter, whatever the case." But for you as Alderman, I just don't really think it's a time, moving into 2020, where we have to take, you take the mentality that there's nothing you can do. You're seated in positions of power. Game and industry shouldn't be coming in here dictating to you that they're going to pay you pennies on a dollar. You tell them what is the demand, because you sit in that position. State's attorney should not have an influence as to where they can influence you to the point that the rights of your citizens are violated here. You dictate the terms that is in the best interest of your constituents, even with your own corporate counsel. If your corporate counselors tell you as fellow parents that, "Hey, let's wait until the word come in on what's going on with the video," as a parent, as a fellow parent, you have the right to speak up and say, at least offer your condolences, and nobody should be able to tell you that you can't, as a fellow parent, to say, "Ma'am, I'm sorry." You don't have to speak to the legal issues, but definitely move this city forward with power and not submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Thank you. Dr. Michael Hargit.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Michael Hargit. I'm the executive director of Mary's Mission. I'm here to support the name change of Mary's Mission over in the First Ward, while Alderman is Sylvia Bolton. The street name changed after this icon that lived in the city of Waukegan for the time that she did as a renowned local and national gospel artist, singing at the White House several times, and just all the things that she did right here in the city of Waukegan, from all the summer camps that she would run, the homeless shelter that is still in operation over there in the First Ward, and for all the things that she did for the community, from the parades, from the toy giveaway, and all the other things. So I'm very excited about the name change. I'm very excited about the new direction of Mary's Mission and all the changes that we're doing in there. We just got done remodeling all the offices in the back. Now we're moving to the common areas. All the rooms are going to be redecorated and redone in a hotel style with flat-screen TVs, computers. So we're really addressing all the different type of problems that the people are coming in there with. We are now working with other agencies that the services that we can't provide in Mary's Mission will be able to partner with other outside agencies to make sure our clients are getting all the support that they need. So with the passing of Dr. Mary Lacy, I think that it is fitting. I think it is a great honor that we take a little bit of time out in the First Ward. We have a little section of helm host named after such a great, wonderful icon as we continue to keep her dream alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Darden.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to address this, but since Mary and Rochelle came up, I'm also a library board trustee, and I respectfully disagree with what they're bringing to the board. I think you all know fairly well how things run when you're voting, and we were not made aware that we can amend her contract, and the procedures needed to be handled the proper way, and we're calling a special meeting, a meeting tomorrow, and doing so. So that's really what's going on, and the logistics of what the unhappiness with our executive director is something that I don't think was handled properly within the library, amongst the employees, the board, and administration, and I think our board needs to get cleaned up and running better. So we're working on that. But on to more, very much more important things. Ethylene oxide, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of Liz Dorman. She has cancer. So I'm going to read what she had sent. I think it's extremely important for you guys to hear this. "I'm sorry I'm not able to be here today, as I'm home recovering from surgery and preparing for the next one. I appreciate Stop ETO for reading my comments. I ask you to recognize that cancer is not a gift to remind us to live each day to the fullest. It is a life sentence. It is hiding in the bathroom for a few extra minutes on your daughter's birthday, researching medical journals to help guide your treatment so you can make it to the next birthday. Cancer is injections of radioactive dye into the most sensitive parts of your body. Cancer is 27 appointments, including surgeries, scans, biopsies, and 60 days while trying to keep up with work after being diagnosed and starting treatment as you waited to hear back about raise, I'm sorry, about a raise your family so badly needs. It is anxiety of waiting for pathology reports and realizing you are forgetting to breathe. It hurts when you do, when you do, because the tubes doctors left inside of you push against your ribs every time you move. Cancer is shielding your developmentally delayed four-year-old from hearing the word "cancer," then listening to him say, "Mommy, don't die, okay?" As you zip up his jacket and not being able to tell him that everything will be okay. By knowingly releasing a cancer-causing gas into the air is at alarming levels. Medline has been negligent. They have handed down a life sentence to citizens of Waukegan and Lake County. The damage has only begun to be seen. As Mayor Cunningham, you saw, and your young neighbor recently diagnosed with leukemia, sorry, he's not even here, but as a medical company, Medline should have known better and done better. It is too late for my family and many others. Please use home rule to ban ETO."
Thank you, Ms. Darden. Thank you. Melanie Brown.
Hi, my name's Melanie Brown. I'm here representing Stop ETO in Lake County. I think most of you probably know that Medline ceased production a while back because they weren't able to meet the standards of the new law. I, for one, this morning looked, and the wind direction was coming from that direction towards my house, and I was able to open my windows and air out my house, and I can't tell you how happy my kids and I have been, knowing that we actually can breathe the air and not worry that our genes are being mutated or that we're somehow setting ourselves up for cancer down the road. I implore that now that Medline has stopped production, that we keep it that way. There is nothing that would make me happier than to know that our air and that the people in our community were being valued above the profits of this industry. The government that we've elected is for the people. You're supposed to represent the majority of us, and they have 50 people working in a sterilization plant. It's closed, there are no shortages, there are no troubles at all caused by the shortage. Meanwhile, on the other side of the equation, you have thousands of members of Stop ETO who are plagued with anxiety and worries constantly for our children. There are five kids in my neighborhood with leukemia. I think when you look at the balance, the people of Waukegan deserve better than to let this 50-person segment of a company continue to put poison out into our community. And I beg that you please look at it in that way. Start looking at the balance of things and see what the right thing to do is. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that we're going to get to the point where there won't be ethylene oxide emitted anymore, but in the meantime, tell that to the mom who has a two-year-old with leukemia, or somebody whose mom, like the one that Annette read about, is with breast cancer and may not live. It's not okay for us to go another day, a week, a month, a year, two years, five years. I know we're going to get there eventually, let's just put an end to this now. I really implore you, as we've given you petitions, please enact home rule. Please don't let Medline open again. There's just no reason for it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Sanchez.
Good evening. Hello, I'd like to start with a Martin Luther King quote due to the holiday yesterday. "The time is always right to do what is right." I'm here to ask the village of Waukegan to exercise home rule authority now and to ban the emission of ethylene oxide, protect the children of Waukegan and the people, that's your job. Yesterday, a Lake County son article by Emily Coleman discussed two affordable housing projects, about $7 million worth, that were put on hold because of ethylene oxide. I'm sure you've seen that. This was, it's starting now, businesses are starting to pull back from already starting to see damage from that. This was homeless for low-income and disabled people, to give them a better quality of life through a community-based housing. Thirty percent of these were going to be children, and now, again, this project is on hold because of ethylene oxide. They don't want to do it right now. So you see what's happening here? Companies like Medline, feel free to come into a community like this and pollute the people, a vulnerable population. You look at Willowbrook, it had the same ethylene oxide population, they had a 20% minority. Here we have a 75% minority. Their problem fixed right away, us waiting. Again, here we're looking at the same thing that happens to, you know, working-class, minority-heavy communities. Our time is less valuable, we have to wait for legislation, we have to wait, our health is secondary. We need to take care of ourselves here, we need you to show the rest of Illinois not wait for the governor and the state legislators to do something, we need you to exercise home rule authority, take care of the people here. Medline uses ethylene oxide because it's cheap and effective at what it does, but it also has been proven now that it's maladaptive technology, it makes people sick. And I believe Medline would like to think they could control it, but they can't. I think this 99.9% captured number is a very convenient number, it's something being sold to you, and if they had, if they were able to capture it, why haven't they captured it? And they would capture it, and if they would, they wouldn't be afraid, worried about being able to prove that they could capture it. So I don't believe that they can. Let's see, and I want to say something quickly in Spanish because it's what I've been saying right now, so. Por favor, infórmate a ti mismo. El óxido de hexilino es un gas que causa cáncer y está siendo emitido en nuestro aire diario por la compañía Medline in Waukegan. Sus hijos corren un alto riesgo de exposición. Demanda de tus líderes de Waukegan que protejan a tus hijos hoy mismo. Lastly, I'd like to finish with a quote from Martin Luther King again. "In the end, we will remember the words of our, we will not remember the words of our enemies, those who would poison us, but silence, but the silence of our friends, those who would protect us." That's you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Just really quick, I don't know if you're aware, the clock wasn't working, Janet, with one of the speakers. I'm going to take advantage that my Alderman, okay. My Alderman for the Third Ward, Greg Mozzio, is seated and charged today. Once again, the entrance right behind that street that thousands of Third Ward and Waukegan residents go in and out of, next to the gas station, I counted at least 30 potholes on there, and it's been like that for years. Okay, I'm just going to begin, first of all, on Sunday, a Jodi police officer was charged, and I'm sure you heard it in the news, in connection with the death of an off-duty Berwyn officer with DUI, driving under the influence, Sunday morning, and it killed a passenger who was another Berwyn police officer, just so tragic. And what caught my attention was, as they clearly stated, and I'm too bad, the chief is not here tonight, they stated that the crash incident is currently being investigated by the Illinois State Police, as it correctly should be. So since apparently nothing's been done, I will be contacting the Illinois State Police tomorrow to see what happened to Waukegan's case of, according to other officers on your staff, sir. Stated that the Waukegan police officer also got a DUI, but he also had a gun in his car. We all know if that had been a black or brown person from the south side of Waukegan, he would have been in jail, I assure you, okay? So this double standard really needs to stop because it really, you're not doing the right thing. Next, you know, you keep sweeping
Once again, the entrance right behind that street that thousands of 3rd Ward and Waukegan residents go in and out of, next to the gas station, I count at least 30 potholes on there, and it's been like that for years. Okay, I'm just going to begin. First of all, on Sunday, a Joliet police officer was charged, and I'm sure you heard it in the news, in connection with the death of an off-duty Berwyn officer with DUI, driving under influence, Sunday morning. And it killed a passenger, what was another, a Berwyn police officer. Just so tragic. And what caught my attention was, as they clearly stated, and I'm too bad the chief is not here tonight, they stated that the crash incident is currently being investigated by the Illinois State Police, as it correctly should be. So since apparently nothing's been done, I will be contacting the Illinois State Police tomorrow to see what happened to Waukegan's case of, according to other officers on your staff. Stated that the Waukegan police officer also got a DUI, but he also had a gun in his car. We all know if that had been a black or brown person from the South Side of Waukegan, he would have been in jail, I assure you. Okay? So this double standard really needs to stop because it really, you're not doing the right thing. Next, you know, you keep sweeping things under the rug, the city of Waukegan, of other criminal cases that occur here in Waukegan because persons are politically connected. That's the bottom line. It's a double standard. The next thing that I want to bring out, which is too bad they're not here, people need to realize it's the talk of the street. It's not a stretch issue. It is a Waukegan taxpayer issue. We're talking about the Ramada Inn. There was a $9,000 water bill that they had. Then, stretch bar here, according to statements, they were made to pay that bill or else they're going to be shut down. So taxpayers, here's what's going on. This place over here, there's other interests, okay? The owner used to be Sam's friend, doesn't want to pay to have it tore down, demolished. So then if they say it's so bad condition, why hasn't the owner never been fined all these years? So they want taxpayers' money, you see, to tear it down.
Excuse me, Ms. Carrasco. Excuse me. Are you addressing the council or are you addressing the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Burdette.
Margaret, will you tell Mr. Hewitt in the back where those potholes are, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I attended a webinar hosted by the Union of Concerned Scientists recently, and it clearly correlates lack of civic engagement, low voter registrations, and low voter turnout to industries coming into that area and preying on the communities, predatory industries. Gaming, also toxic industries. That's why we still have a coal plant here. There's a correlation, there's a data correlation to predatory industries entering into communities that have low civic engagement. So what we need to do moving forward is find a way to engage the citizenry that has lost their voice, that has decided not to show up to vote because they feel as though their voice doesn't count. I'm not asking you to listen to individuals who come from out of Waukegan, out of the district, but listen to your civic engagement data. They don't feel represented. So it's time to make a move and make a change so that we can feel represented, listen to the voices of the many. I sat in on an EPA webinar today, and the EPA webinar was regarding miscellaneous organic chemical manufacturing. So unfortunately, our two facilities don't fall under the MON rule. It's called the MON rule, and it's going to standardize ETO emissions. Those that fall under the MON rule will have a drastic, drastic reduction of exposure to their citizenry. We don't fall under that rule. So if we have a leak at the pumps at 10,000 parts per million, then it gets reported. Otherwise, it does not. Massive leak. At the valves, 500 parts per million. So if it leaks 499, no reporting. If there is a leak at 500, ETO becomes spontaneously combustible. It will blow up spontaneously at 500 parts per million. We need to do something. We need to listen to our citizenry and protect our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Burdette.
Ready? Okay, cool. All right. So I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Clean Power Lake County. In February of last year, my wife and I stood up here and talked about our experiences living within a mile of an ETO emitting facility. Since then, we've had quite a few busy months. There's been testimony, legislation, rule changes, on and on, at the state, federal, and local levels. However, I want to circle back to the very first time I addressed this council, and I said, it's not just the people that are watching, it's businesses as well. And if you don't do something, you're going to start to lose businesses. While the relocation plans of Trifinity or the rumored relocation plans of Federal Supply are due to a number of factors, I cannot think that having an ETO facility nearby is a selling point for businesses. The owner of Federal Supply came out to the zoning committee and told you all of this when Medline was requesting a higher stack. However, it became very clear in a pair of articles that came out these past couple days in the Lake County News-Sun, courtesy of Emily Coleman. The first article that I want to highlight is from yesterday, and it lets us know, as you mentioned, not one, but two affordable housing developments are on hold now. One is a $7 million, million-dollar project, and the other one is an 80-unit affordable housing project. Now, so we're in our second year of running a budget deficit, and because we're an environmental justice community, we are missing out on this construction revenue and also housing for our most vulnerable populations. Now, the question that I want to ask is for what? Because the other article from today confirms what many of us had already been told by the Lake County Health Department. Medline has been shut down since December 13th for over a month. We've heard over and over and over again from Medline spokespeople that any interruption in their processes would result in a shortage of surgical packs and sterile supplies in Illinois and beyond. However, they've been closed for over a month with no reports or even rumors of shortages. No public health emergency has come about. Simply this, they are unable to comply with existing state law and will remain so by their own spokesperson's acknowledgement for at least several more weeks. They're not producing anything. And around their plant, ambient air levels are finally returning to normal. They're simply remaining in our community, halting our progress. We at CPLC, we, the community, and all you officials want progress. We all want the same thing here. And at this point, these facilities are not only causing a public health crisis, but are also actively stopping our sick, our elderly, and our vulnerable children from being housed and becoming more secure residents. If these housing projects are to move forward, you all have to act, or you can be the ones to oversee even more residents, even more jobs, and potential businesses leaving our community. You all hired supplemental legal counsel this year. I recommend you use it protecting the residents in your fence-lined communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burdette. I have Charles Pitts. Please.
Ultimately, I'm going to start by Avalon Cotton. The thing that really bothers me is that basically the city, you know, the city was in the middle of this guy's death, and then instead of being forthright in upcoming with whatever video and police officers' names, basically they hid behind legal counsel. And it's nowhere near the best practices. Where I'm from, 10 days later, they release video with evidence, like pictures of evidence, they released the officers' names, and they started doing that like about four years ago. So I'm saying, Waukegan is at least four or more years behind in policy and procedure when it comes to policing the community. The other issue is that where are the mechanisms for police accountability? They're cloaked somewhere, you know, I mean, where are the meetings regarding how the police function, what they're doing? Is the diversity in race? Who are they pulling over? Where are the meetings that those issues would come up, where the police chief would describe it or address it? Where are the police chiefs, like, statements of like how are things going in the community? You know, if you don't have a regular police commission meeting, all of that stuff gets lost. And ultimately, we're at a point where we cannot trust the police department. Policing in America has gotten a bad name, and it's earned that name very hard. It's worked very hard to earn that bad name. And I believe it's your job to create policy so that police departments are more transparent, so that we know what's going on, when things are going wrong, so that we, so we don't, we have protections in case we're overran with white supremacist officers, officers who just have a fetish for being violent towards people. I feel like Waukegan is failing to do its job in protecting its citizens regarding police accountability issues. I'm just hoping that someone will take these issues seriously. I just feel like there's police meetings in the past that have happened, and I can't find agendas, minutes, anything about this. So I'm hearing a bunch of rumors, and I'm looking, and I can't find anything about police accountability issues.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. That concludes the audience time. Your honor? Representative, representative Mayfield, come on.
I apologize you pulled the sheet before I could sign it. Statement was in Rita Mayfield, 120 South Genesee, Waukegan. Thank you so much. Annette, thank you for all you're doing. My people from Stop ETO, Jim, thank you for helping to get the word out to our Latino community. Everything that you've done has really been helpful, and a lot of people did view that video, so I just want you to know. Thank you so much for that. But I am here for item number P on the agenda, the street naming for a icon and a huge role model here in our community, Dr. Mary Lacy. For those of you that don't know Dr. Lacy, she grew up near where Emmett Till's was killed in 1955. That was one of the major sparks for the Civil Rights Movement, and Dr. Lacy actually marched with Martin Luther King Jr., and that's very apropos, as yesterday was Dr. King's birthday and our Day for Giving. So I just want to make sure that we point that out. She's done so much. She has fostered over 5,000 children from this area in the last 30 years. How many other people can say that? That she took in other people's children, raised them, fed them, clothed them, and provided a roof over their head? She is just so phenomenal. Not only does she do that for the children, but she also fed and sheltered the homeless and anyone else in need that came to her. She started, she had orchestrated the first Christmas parade. Many of you that were elected at the time participated in that, and we thank you. She brought joy to several hundred children each year with her, whose parents were incarcerated. She did this with the Toys for Tots at the jail. She started that program. She brought that there. Her legacy continues to live on through her son, Major Lacy, who did a recent Toys for Tots and feeding for the homeless this past Christmas. It is very, very important to the community that we keep Mary and Mary's mission alive, and that street naming will definitely do that. She is an icon on the South Side of Waukegan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it, sir.
Just real quick, I'll do this now instead of alderman's time, so these people don't have to sit around relative to ETO. I did read the legal opinion of a lawyer that one of your group had sent that to me. Now, I'm not a judge and I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of the imagination about Home Rule. So I will be looking into that further, of what that entails from our legal counsel and get their opinion on it. First and foremost, obviously, everybody, we all want clean air and clean water. That's first and foremost. I think that's one of the city's biggest charges, is to make sure we got clean air and clean water. With that being said, the other thing that we want to make sure is, if, whatever we do, we want to make sure we do it right, because the last thing that we want to do, and the city has done it too many times in the past, is get ourselves dragged into court and next thing you know, we're paying money for lawyers and judgments in this and that because we didn't go about it the right way. So I know sometime, I told you when we first got into this, when I told you we were going to make the motion to test the air. Sometimes the wheels of government just turn so slow. And trust me, I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues up here, but it frustrates me terribly how slow the wheels of justice turn, the wheels of government turn. It just is what it is sometimes, but I just want you to know that your concerns are not falling on deaf ears with me. I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I just wanted to put that out there. So thank you very much. All right. With that in mind, alderman, will you look over the consent agenda and pull out any items that you want to be pulled out, and we will proceed.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to have a look at it first, and then we'll go from there. Any items need to be pulled out? If not, I will take a motion by Alderman, oh, Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out item F.
Okay.
For explanation, please.
Okay. So I'm going to have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner, to do the consent agenda and taking out item F. We voted separate. So roll call, please, on, no, we, voiceover, the consent, right?
You have to read it. You want me to read it? You want to read it?
No, don't, but we have to, don't, we're going to have to make a motion to take the consent?
You took the motion, now you have to read the agenda.
Now you gotta read.
I told you I was going to read a lot. I'll read it. That's fine. I don't mind. All right. Item A, motion to approve the regular admitting meetings from Monday, January 6, 2020. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve a change order in the amount of $15,556.53, increasing the contract awarded to McDonough Mechanical for HVC preventative maintenance approval on November 18, 2019, to a total revised amount of $76,000. This was, matter was heard in the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Excuse me. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve the change order in the amount of $79,000, increasing the contract awarded to North Harris Computer Corporation relative to the Enterprise Resource Planning System approved in June 17, 2019, to a total revised amount of $330,688 for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute a grant agreement with FM Global Group to provide $6,067.48 in funding for the fire prevention. This grant is 100% reimbursable with no local match requirement. This matter was heard before the fin, oops, I need to worry about that. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute a grant agreement with DAS Charitable Fund to provide $25,000 in funding for police K-9 programs. This grant is 100% reimbursable with no local match requirement. We're going to take F by itself. G, motion to approve a resolution amending the fees for special events provided for reduced fee for non-for-profit organizations. Motion to adopt an ordinance amending the city code to conform with the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Motion to approve local 150 bonus dated January 3, 2020, in the amount of $500. Motion to approve final payout dated January 3, 2020, in the amount of $688.73. Motion to approve the regular payroll dated January 17, 2020, in the amount of $1,619,799.76. Motion to approve comp time payout dated January 7, 2020, in the total amount of $50, oh, 17th, I'm sorry, thank you, alderman. Motion to approve PBLC holiday buyback dated January 17, 2020, in the amount of $4,086.14. Motion to approve elected officials in civil service stipends dated January 7, 2020, in the amount of $6,866.66. Motion to approve vendor payments dated 2000, January 20, 2020, in the amount of $1,083,353, no, that's not right.
Wait.
Hold on, I, I got to get my eyeballs here. Sorry. Motion to approve an honorary street sign in honor of Pastor Dr. Mary Lacy. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
He stepped out.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Alderman Florian, I'm sorry.
Alderman Florian. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Florian. I got knocked off.
Sorry, Alderman Florian.
Knocked off my cadence.
Item F, motion to amend and correct the authorization granted to the proper city officials to execute an agreement with Cargill Inc. to compass minerals, Inc., American Inc., in an amount not to exceed $460,000 for the purpose of purchasing roads out in the way of the competitive bid process pursuant to City of Waukegan Code of Ordinance Exemption of Government Joint Purchasing, Section 2-458I3, State of Illinois CMS Joint Purchasing, L59... L5910-5910. This matter was heard, okay. Alderman Turner, what is?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to pull this out because of the significant amount of dollars being spent and kind of get an explanation from our Director of Public Works on the cost and why this, why it was necessary to amend the purchase contract.
Mr. Hewitt, can you come up and give us a quick explanation, please? Thank you.
Actually, because there was an error in the name. It was not the contract. The error was in Cargill Incorporated. It's not To Be, it was Compass Minerals. That's the one we've always had the contract with, okay, through the state. So somehow, that got confused, so we had to bring it back to council.
Right. Thank you for the clarification, sir.
Thank you. Our motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Newsom, got to read it again. Motion to amend and correct the authorization granted to the proper city officials to execute an agreement with Cargill Inc. to Compass Minerals Inc., American Inc., in an amount not to exceed $460,000 for the purpose of purchasing road salt in the way of the competitive bid process pursuant to City of Waukegan Code of Ordinance Exemption of Government Joint Purchasing, Section 2-458I3, State of Illinois CMS Joint Purchasing, L5910-5910. This matter, okay. Roll call.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Okay. The monthly, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Newsom to file the monthly treasurer's report. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Okay. And six, Alderman Newsom?
Item six has been held over until February 3, the next council meeting.
Okay. And we have, next, we have no seven, eight, nine, 10. Alderman's time.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to thank you all for all your positive words of reflection concerning Dr. Mary Lacy. Also wanted to point out, too, she was also sung for Betty Ford, and that was with a spirit of excellence, and I'm just grateful for you as the city council for supporting this change. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
All right, at this time, I'd like to remind all residents, when we get a snowfall, please try and cooperate with your snowplow driver employee to move these cars and trucks and also in the alleyways. It's very hard for them, and I feel for them. I know in my ward, I've got a lot of cars parked out in the street, and that snow was wet and heavy, and it got cold. So I plead to you, please, try and cooperate with us and Public Works and your snowplow driver and move those cars, please. Thank you very much.
Alderman Mozio.
Yeah, just one thing. Budget time is coming up. I said at the last council meeting, I would encourage residents to look at our budget. It's online. You can see how much money we bring in and how much money we spend and what we spend it on. This is the time to come forward, not when the tax rate comes. Basically, that horse has already got out of the barn by then, so I would encourage residents, it's online, there's nothing to hide there. If you don't understand it, call your alderman. Your alderman can call anybody in the finance department, and I'm sure they can give you the answer to it. It's not that hard a process as far as getting the information. It's there. Go on the website, look at the budget, and then go from there. That's it.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to commend the Department of Public Works for the great job they did with the snow removal, not only on the main thoroughfares, but certainly the side streets. We want to make sure that our residents continue to adhere to policies regarding where we park, because it's important, because of the side streets, there's only one side to park on, so we want to make sure that you adhere to that. Also, in the fourth ward, I'll be announcing at our next council meeting, we will have our next ward meeting. Also, we'll talk more about the garage sale that we'll be having in the month of February. Also, it's important that as we're driving during the school time that we're careful because certainly students are crossing the streets, especially in the fourth ward. We have several schools in the fourth ward. We need to be careful, the streets are sometimes slippery. Young people are crossing the streets on Washington, Butrick, and Jackson, so let's be careful with that. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom. Pass. Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. So in the sixth ward, I'd like to bring the attention of our residents, and this obviously applies to the rest of the city, but when we have these snowstorms, and I believe the ordinance states that you can't park on the street if there's going to be two or more inches of snow, so you should be watching your forecast and certainly moving your car off the street to allow for snow plowing. If the snowplow comes, that truck is so big, it can't, it can't plow the house before yours. If your car's parked directly in front of your house, it can't plow before your house, and it can't plow your house, and it can't swing in tight enough to plow the next house where three houses don't get towed or plowed, okay? Specifically in the sixth ward, I have requested, and the police department is accommodating me, we are having increased enforcement of the alternate parking ordinances. And it's not every night, but there are different areas, I'm picking them out, so you can blame me, not the police, but we are definitely enforcing the alternate parking ordinances and other parking restrictions. I also want to thank again and recognize, acknowledge the Public Works Department, obviously, for the great work they do with snow removal, but specifically in the sixth ward, there's been a number of activities carried out, initiatives by the Public Works Department. Most recently, on a Sunday, I saw where a water main had broken at the corner of Jackson and Ridgeland, and there was a crew out there from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There were about 20 houses affected by that outage, but those guys went in there, they dug out that hole, they fixed the leak, and they filled in and patched that hole. I mean, you would never know that there was like, I don't know, an eight-foot-deep hole there just a few hours before. They had a fantastic job, Mike. Thank you. Number three, and you know, later this year, I'm going to provide a more detailed report, if you will, on statistics of activities by code enforcement, police department, and public works in the sixth ward, but I just want, this just struck, this is so striking. From May of 2018 to May of 2019, and remember, I took office in May, right? So we had 246 notices of violation of code compliance issues. 246, right? May 2018, May 2019. When I was elected, I committed to setting a new tone for neighborhood cleanliness and neighborhood safety. And here's what we got, all right? Between May of 2019 until today, we wrote 646 notices of violation, right? On top of that, of that, only about 10 of those notices of violations turned into citations. That means 636 of those violations were resolved without a citation. So we are getting things done, and if you travel to sixth ward, if you live in the sixth ward, you can see what we're accomplishing. And I say "we" because I work extremely closely, hand in hand, with our code compliance officer, Mr. Josh Nickerson, to get these things done in sixth ward. And finally, I want to, Commander Beach, if you will, convey this to your team, neighborhood policing officer, Chief Wallace, and all involved. I had a ride-along with our neighborhood policing officer, Officer Tavoras, and I got to tell you, gave me an entirely new perspective on policing, right? So I'm riding with Officer Tavoras, we wrapping up, this is boring, man, you're just riding around in circles. So we come into the parking lot, and we're getting, we're swapping out of the vehicle, and a call comes over the radio that there's a burglary in process in my ward, right? And so Officer Tavoras and I hit out, we're there, we were there in three minutes, and when we arrived, there was already an officer on scene that this burglary in process. But what struck me was how, it seemed to me instinctively, how well coordinated that response was. There were about seven officers appeared there, right? And they all came in and set up a perimeter, and I did play some small role in that, sir, but they set up that perimeter, and they were to get those two burglars in custody without, they never drew a weapon, never drew a taser, never drew a firearm, but they were able to get those two alleged perpetrators out of that residence and secure the residence, no harm, no foul, and it was just very eye-opening. It struck me because we went from zero to 90 like that, and that gave me a new appreciation for the officers and how they respond, and that we are engaging, we hire these officers, and we pay them, not so much for what they do, but what they might have to do. And this was, it just was really an eye-opener, and I appreciate that. So please convey that to the team, and thank you very much. That's all that I have. Thanks.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to thank Mike and his crew echoing what my fellow aldermen have said. You guys are tremendous. Thank you very much for the hard work. There is more snow coming, and we need to collectively remind all of our citizens regarding the parking issues and the effects of not parking properly. Other than that, I wanted also to thank all the citizens that came up and spoke. I do appreciate the three minutes that you are afforded and listening to your input. Thank you very much.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to shout out to Austin again and the crew that worked with him for the downtown decorations for the holidays. It looked awesome, and I know he worked very hard at that in spite of some personal drama he had going on that week. So thank you again, Austin. We really do appreciate that, your effort. I want to say a little bit about the ETO. I'd like to echo what Alderman Mozio/Mayor Protem said tonight. We are listening.
Alderman.
We are listening. We want to do everything we can to keep our community safe, but we need to do it within the guidelines of what we're dealt with up here in terms of doing things within the law. But we are listening, and as Alderman Rivera said, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking. It does matter. Also, I want to announce I'm having a ward meeting for the eighth ward on Thursday, February 27, at 6:30 PM at McCall School. I'm hosting this one in the ward so that hopefully more people will be able to attend since it'll be closer to home. So Thursday, February 27, at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
All right. Motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Newsom to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks for coming.